Get this show on the road. Good morning and welcome to the town hall meeting with our county executive, George Lattimer. That's a round of applause right there. This meeting today is co-sponsored in conjunction with Zeta Phi Beta, New Size, New Size Chapter?
New Size Theta.
New Size Theta. And of course, this could not happen without the Peak Skill Field Libraries. We want to give them a round of applause. The mission of the NAACP is to ensure the political, social, educational, and economic equality and rights for all persons and to eliminate race-based discrimination and racial oppression. That's what we do. That's our mission. We want to thank you all for attending. We want to give a special thanks and a welcome to our county executive for being here. He's often spoken about wanting to reach out to the community and be involved in the community and having a presence here in northern western, which sometimes we get forgotten up here in northern western. It's close to the city and near White Plains, but we want to thank you for being here. Thank you for being a man of your word and coming up and seeing what we have with our concerns here. About two weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago, our general membership, we had a meeting and we called it "Community Speaks", because we just wanted to hear from the community. We wanted to hear what concerns they had, what are we doing well, what are we not doing well, what are we missing? And that is born out of the idea that you can't help the people if you don't hear the people. But we have to listen. And I want to go on record right now and say that George Lattimer, who's a gentleman that not only listens well, but he takes action, and that's what we need. So again, we want to thank you for being here. Give him another round of applause. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to our moderator, Jennifer Carpenter, who's going to come up and take it from there. Jennifer, give her a round of applause.
Thank you all. First of all, I wanted to recognize the civic engagement committee who actually organizes. You've heard from our president, Mark McDowell, and also now we should see the members of the civic engagement committee, who's here? Madeline and Susan in the back, could you just like stand up? This, this effort is not a big one happening. The Peak Skill NAACP, you know, well, Peak Skill in itself is a great city. It is, and you know, far along the Hudson River, it embraces communities from Maupin Pack as well as Cortlandt Manor, Hudson Valley, Austin. So they have a, the Peak Skill NAACP has a really robust membership and a lot of people that participate. So even with regard to this particular forum, we had so many people reach out from different communities. And so we want to recognize everybody and embrace everybody and understand that, you know, this is a wonderful opportunity for county executives to hear from everybody. As a moderator, I feel really honored. I'm actually new to the, um, to Peak Skill NAACP. And so I come from Cortlandt Manor. And so this is quite an honor for me to actually be here and to be able to help to facilitate communication here. We do have ground rules. We want to make this experience the best experience for you. It's, it's, it's a lot to get done in an hour and a half, so it's a Saturday morning. We don't want to waste your time. So we want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to really, really get, be heard. The Peak Skill NAACP, well, the NAACP in general, you know, focuses on initiatives regarding education, economic empowerment, civic engagement, criminal justice, health, and many other areas. And so we were able to get questions that encompass all those different particular areas. So what we'll do is we have a set of questions that people sent us online, but first we want to hear from you. So we'll pretty much take turns. This is how we'll do it. We will ask you to stand and just say your name and where you're from, state your question. We'll give everybody about two minutes. We will rotate between the floor, questions coming from the floor, and the questions from the residents who sent questions in. And that will pretty much provide a level of equity so that everybody gets a chance to be heard. Is that okay with you?
That's perfectly fine.
Okay. All right, so.
But before you ask a question, can I just make a few comments to start?
Before we ask questions, we will hear from the county guest, Savannah County Executive, Lattimer. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. I appreciate it. I do appreciate the opportunity to come up and then dialogue about these questions. It was a little over a year ago where I sat here along with Ken Jenkins and we were competing for the Democratic nomination for a county executive. And of course, you know now that Ken and I are partners in the way we are going about our business campaign, Deputy County Executive for this administration. We're in office for a little over eight months. We have a four-year term, but eight months is a decent start, but there's a long way to go. So many of the things that will come up, the questions that will be asked and where we are, you may find that we're in the process of doing something. We haven't accomplished it yet. So I want to be clear that it's going to take us time to do all the things we want. Hopefully, we will show that we're trying to do the right thing. There may be questions you ask that I'm not familiar with at all, and that will be something that I write down a note, take back, and then start to work on it. I think Mark said something that's important, and I think this is something that we're striving to do. The way Westchester County is physically laid out, Peak Skill is in the far northern portion of it, a good distance from Mount Vernon, Yonkers, Nurishell, White Plains, the other major centers. I grew up in Mount Vernon, on the south side of Mount Vernon. I live in the ride Porchester, Maricopa area of the county. And so we're trying to make every effort, if we're not in the backyard, to try to be here enough to understand what makes issues that are unique to Peak Skill, as well as we deal with overall issues that affect everybody. I'm sure we're going to be talking about the homeless center, you know, right off the bat. But what we are trying to do in some of the changes we've made are broad-based. They're not just for one part of the county or not. Second day on the job, we banned the gun show in Westchester County Center. And the county legislators went on to make that a law so that if I get hit by a bus later today, it's not a whim with the county executive as to whether you do or don't have a gun show, you're not going to have a gun show. We passed an Immigrant Protection Act, which was vetoed a year ago and was modified a little bit, and we signed it into law. If you are applying for employment in Westchester County government, we have banned the box on the application. You can not just take off a box and say you don't get arrested or whatever. You can discuss that if you get into an interview along with your whole career. So you're not being ruled out on day one because you had some, some incident of some sort that involved the, you know, the police to criminal justice system. And then I believe in, at some point in time, we're going to make that a law, a cross Westchester County legislature is working on it. So I don't want to go through the whole long grocery list of those things. Those things will come out as we ask and answer questions. But I think, you know, we've tried to change the direction of the county government on some of these policy issues, budgetary issues, those make come up in questions. We'll try to address those. We have not yet, so you know, formulated the budget for 2019. We have to submit as an executive branch to the legislature by November 10th, to give you a round number, what the budget would be for the new year. So people come up and say, when are my taxes going to? Hold the phone. We try to work through that. We want to have reasonable taxes, but at the same time, we have a different philosophy than what preceded us. We believe in funding public programs where those public programs are necessary. And the good part of the speak-out is that people are going to identify what they think of as necessary, which may or may not be what's been there previously. So I had the opportunity to stop up kind of by surprise back, I think it was December, to an NAACP meeting of what's he doing here? Because I wanted to start the process of learning. And I've had a chance to visit the Hudson Valley Arts Center, Contemporary Arts Center. I've had a chance to be up, there's a big fire ceremony for the people who died at the Fleischman's Gin Fire a hundred years ago. So we've got a long way to go to understand Peak Skill better, but we're going to try. And hopefully with Ken Jenkins and Joe McDonald and John Know and all the people in the administration, we'll do a good job. So that was the whole opening comment. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, so who wants to begin first?
Just state your name. My name is Kay Bartolmas. I'm a long-term citizen of Peak Skill. And I'm now involved in the Conservation Advisory Council. And this is a small thing perhaps, but I was really encouraged to read that you made a directive after, about retaining walls, after retaining wall in Austin fell. And there's a retaining wall in Peak Skill that we have been concerned about for a long time. And I wrote a note to your office asking if we could be on the list to have that retained wall checked. It's on Crampon Road, in between Crampon Road and Licent Terrace. And it's a property that's privately owned and it's not maintained at all. You can't even see it now because there are so many trees growing out of it. So I'm just hoping that this request will be attended to and that we can get some safety there in that retaining wall. Thank you.
I'm going to read off my phone number, the office case. So when you sit down, you write it down. Monday morning, give us a call. And you probably want to give it a message. We usually have a Monday morning senior meeting. Just say, please, and give us the specific on the location, and then we'll find out who we have, who's done what inspections and where, and we'll make sure we prioritize. We'll work with the city, because the city may already be on top of the issue or not, I don't know, but we'll talk about it. But if you or anybody else wants to reach the office that I'm in, 995-2900. That's the county executive's phone. You can reach Ken Jenkins there. You can reach Joe McDonald, our director of operations. Any of the folk who work with us there, myself included, 995-2900. I'm not going to tell you that it's always easy to get through, not because we're trying to be difficult, we get a lot of demand, and we're in meetings on this and that and the other thing. But if you call, leave the details of what the retaining walls will verify, if we've seen it or not, inspected it or not. And if we haven't, or the city hasn't, or whatever the, you know, whatever the jurisdictions will be on top of it for you.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome.
Kay, is that good? We're going to start, we're going to go to a question close to home, close to our hearts, as about our little three-year-olds. In other communities, they have initiated pre-K for, starting at three years old. What are you doing to make pre-K available to all Peak Skill students?
Well, the county government does not have the authority or the power to act on education issues. Because I was in the state senate and the state assembly previously, I've always been a supporter of pre-K services and universal kindergarten services. But knowing that most communities don't have the money to do those things, and the poor in the community, the more you need state aid to be reallocated for that purpose. So as a state legislator, I've been an advocate of that. I know that Sandy Gailiff represents you here, and I know that she is in sync with that. I'm not sure, you know, where you are in the other house. But from a, from a county standpoint, we see the value of education because we do have the, we do have the responsibility sadly to incarcerate people. And we know that there's a correlation between education and incarceration. The more a child is educated, the more they get an early start, the better the chances are that they will have a productive life and avoid that which will lead you into, you know, that, that pipeline, school-to-prison pipeline thing, which we see it, we know it exists. And to the extent that we don't want to have a full jail, we'd much rather have, you know, kids who are going on to college, whether they use our community college as a stepping stone or another four-year college. In terms of the education piece, the conversations that we have with the state legislators is along those lines, which is to provide resources to have as thorough a pre-K program, three and four-year-olds, before they get to kindergarten, and then as much as we can, universal kindergarten. The problem in Westchester, obviously, is you've got some very wealthy communities, and in those communities, the people who live there have the money to have their kids in pre-K in the private structure. So it's the poorer communities for which we need to invest the money, and that's the argument we've made in terms of state education funds. Redirect them, redirect the public funds to those districts. And I represented Porchester, and I represented, you know, some of the, well, Nurishell is another one, where there's a certain amount of that issue, and certainly Mount Vernon, Peak Skill falls in the category. Is advocating for state money so that, because the local, candidly, the local school district will not have enough money to do this on their own. So it's going to take outside money to help make that happen in Peak Skill, and to support that and try to advocate for that. But the county doesn't have a direct role to play in the sense that we don't allocate the money, nor do we have the power to authorize it.
Not to dominate the, the time, however, it is a question with regard to the money. It's $14 million that Peak Skill is due. So one of the questions was what is being done to make sure that they are reimbursed for those funds that they have not been given?
Well, again, because the funding stream is from the state to the school district or the state to the community, what I tried to do when I was a state legislator is fight for the communities that I had to represent, that were represented Peak Skill as part of my legislative district. And, you know, you're, you're dealing with the governor's office, you're dealing with state education department, and you're constantly pushing, how are you pushing? You're showing statistics that show the need of the community. You're showing the breakdown by demographics and by grade level. You're showing that in a county like this, in urban centers like Yonkers, we have a growing school population. You go to upstate New York, the poorer communities have a shrinking population, and yet they're still getting a certain static amount of aid. And so therefore, the per pupil aid or the per district aid is disproportionately for other places rather than for us. So that's the argument that you make. The decision-makers for the, for the money that we're speaking about are in all of them. And they're not the legislators. The legislators are your advocates. It's the executive branch that does the allocation of resources. And so what I would say, obviously, the next chance you have to speak to Sandy Gailiff, the senator, you, you get a sense from them of how they're strategizing to try to, to try to have that money be allocated, insofar as I'm happy to support those initiatives, you know, letter of support, memorandum of support, put it on my agenda when I meet with the governor. I've got a long agenda. But, but we're happy to prioritize that so that you get more of what you need. And I do think there's a societal discussion here about taxation that goes with this. I don't believe that you can ever have enough money out of property taxation to fund education. We're going to have to shift it to income-based funding. A, because it's fairer that way. Folks who are senior citizens who can pay a limited amount of property taxes don't have the resource to be able to pay what's necessary. And the people who have the resources will generally be taxed through income tax more fairly than they will be through property taxes. And we can make that transition, and I think we're in a better position to fund pre-K and then K-12 education. And I might add, because I'm a supporter of this, college as well, certainly community college if not beyond that, because that education function is essential.
Thank you. And I might add that Peak Skill, NAACP in my research, has been on a forefront of that advocacy. I was quite surprised, quite impressed. The next person? Oh, come on. Don't be shy. Come on up. Now, I told you I'm new, so I haven't met.
Hi. Good morning. David Freed, member of the Peak Skill branch of the NAACP and a resident of Cortlandt Manor. We have.
Committee Chair.
And committee chair of the Health Committee.
Okay.
I have a two-part question, all about the nuclear reactor in our backyard. First part is about safety. Second part is about taxes, especially if it closes. Could you respond to that?
Sure. Well, on the safety side, we had a simulation on the first of August prior to being tested on September 25th by a FEMA group that's coming in. And they were also doing a simulation. And we have the Emergency Operations Center in Hawthorne in the basement of a state structured facility. And when you go in there, you feel like, you know, you're in the White House Situation Room type, with big screens with information. And, and going through the, the safety issues of how do we respond, whether there could be a water leak or a gas leak, and what are the protocols? When do we shut down? How do we protect people? When do we evacuate? All of those types of safety actions are plotted out. They have a protocol and a plan. The, the reality is, is that if you get a serious breakdown in the system, then those protocol plans will break down. Those are really meant for fairly minor breaches. And serious, seriously, that's not it. If you release some gas, the gas is going to move wherever the wind currents move, and you may have to move people out of areas. If you were to get, you know, China Syndrome, Three Mile Island stuff, then you're well beyond the ability of what the county can do to, to do these things. And I suspect in a real-world scenario, the state steps and takes over, the governor starts giving directions. The governor's emergency powers are greater than those that I have as county executive, but we've been going through to understand what those are. The intrinsic safety of the plant, we took a tour. And when you take a tour, you know, obviously, Energi is a company that runs nuclear plants, so they accept the, the industry standards for safety. I don't know enough to know when I, when they're speaking to me, is this 100% true? Is there, you know, you put the best foot forward, the best face forward? Since they're shutting the plants down, my sense is, is that we're dealing, I think, I think the number two reactor was down in 2020, and the number three reactor was down in 2021. So we're, we're playing an end game. This is like you play the game of football, and you got six minutes left on the clock. So we just have to run out six minutes without having a horrific situation. If we were debating the overall safety of Indian Point, and it was going to be there for the next 40 years, I'm not going to be here for the next 40 years, but if it would be here for the next 40 years, it would be different. Most of the safety discussions we're having now is what happens after the shutdown? And the, the general buzz, no commitments made by Energi, is they're likely to sell the plant to a company that has, in theory, expertise in decommission. And there's a fund for decommission that has X million or multiple millions of dollars in it, and that company would then own it. Energi leaves the scene, and that company would then go through the process of deconstructing the plant over whatever length of time is agreed upon with the federal regulators, and I guess the state will have a role in it. The county obviously is very interested because there's, there's the question of what happens to the land, how's it going to be used in the few years to come? What happens to the pipeline that's underneath it? And making sure that something doesn't happen at the plant that affects the pipeline, and then we have, you know, Armageddon, you know, in the, in the neighborhood. And then also the economic impact of losing an entity that does in fact employ a thousand people and so on and so forth. What does that mean for Buchanan, for Cortland, and for Peak Skill for that matter? On the latter part, we have our, our deputy economic director, Richard Gibbons, has been meeting with Cortland officials and Buchanan officials to talk through the economic impacts and how we would try and place, figure out how to place people when they lose jobs. And in some cases, repurpose them. I'll give you a quick example of it. They're, they're, the number one organized workers on the, in the department are utility workers, UWA Local 12. That's the largest group. The second largest group are organized by the Teamsters. Yes, my son, what, what do Teamsters who drive trucks, how do they organize? They organize the men and women who are the high-level security people there, the guys who work with the M16s, and they do work around the M16s. Me, and I say them with an M16 as like a sobering thought, that they're prepared to deal with what might be a terrorist attempt or something. So, but those people are trained at a high level of security, and you could use people with that training in other places. If you're trying to secure, you know, ballparks and train stations and the United Nations, those jobs should be movable elsewhere in the New York metropolitan area. So in theory, we shouldn't have to have all those people go out there. A certain number of employees there will move with Energi, I guess. A certain number will take retirement where they are in this situation, and have all those left over to try to deal with. But the, the actual security of the plant and how it's going to be used going forward will depend on how Energi transfers the property, if they do in fact do this through decommission. And then how we as, as an outside government deal with it. It's going to still be privately owned. So we can't go in there and say, you'll create a park, you'll do this. And those spent fuel rods are going nowhere. The spent fuel rods are going to be on that site, long past everybody else's lifespan in this room. The youngest person in this room is going to live to be a very old individual, and those things are going to still be there. We have to make sure that that is as secure as we can. And then the pipeline becomes another issue. Once again, something regulated by the feds, and the current federal government, I'm not going to get into that because that's a whole other town hall meeting. But this federal government is unresponsive to these concerns. When we talk to them about, aren't you concerned about these things, and they're just driving right through red lights and not caring. So we'll do what we can do as a county government to try to ensure the security and the repurposement, repurpose for use of it. It is waterfront property, but there is going to be pollution on that property. And it's not going to just be tomorrow, a really nice park, or, you know, whatever else it is that's being theorized.
You know, I must say, there is something to be said about being part of a community. This question was asked on behalf of residents of Verplane, Buchanan, Peak Skill, Portland, with regard to Indian Point. And you answered every point that they asked. So that really, really speaks to the spirit of community, you know. Let's say, let's go on. We have an economic question. With current limits on combined school and property tax deductions, what progress have you made with Governor Cuomo to reform or reverse this Westchester, this Westchester homeowners? Also, there has been a discussion of the county raising taxes in order to meet the needs of the county. Is this true?
Well, a couple of things. First of all, as far as the SALT deduction is concerned, let's, and as we talk about how we're going to respond to it, let's not forget that what it was, was a flat-out ripoff of New York state taxpayers. And the people who supported it, voted for it in Washington, will try to change the debate into something else. So this is about the higher taxes in these states, or as if you're putting it, it was their fault that we did this. They decided to take this tax deduction away to punish politically New York, New Jersey, Connecticut, Illinois, Massachusetts, California, because we have a different philosophy of government. We do not have a philosophy of state government that's South Carolina, Carolina, Texas, why you got to mean Idaho, Alaska, which is low taxes and low services. I know people, when they get to a certain age, my age, 65 older, they say, oh, I got to get out of here. The taxes are killing me. I got to go. I'm going to South Carolina. You don't hear those people saying when they're 27 years old, they got three kids, I'm going to South Carolina for better education. You don't hear them saying, I'm going down to South Carolina to make a hell of a lot less in my salary than I do. They stay in New York to make New York money and to get New York services, and then when the time is right to go, they go. I don't mind that. You get young folk who say, man, there's nothing to do in this town, not just this, this town, I see that stuff going on. You get to some of these other suburban communities in Westchester County, and young people, you know, people 20 years old, say, I want to go to the city, man, I want to be in the city. Of course you do. You know, when you're 20 years old, you want to be in the city. Manhattan is where it's at. Because at that point in your life, that's what you wanted to be. You get to be 35 and you got a couple of kids, you want to be in the summers. Recreation for your kids, good education, you know, you're calming down, you're not going out 11 o'clock at night to start your evening a party, you know, what I used to do then. But, but the bottom line is that, so when we talk about what the SALT deduction is, it is the elimination of a tax deduction that we have had for 100 years. It was done out of spite and out of ideology. Now, the question, what are we going to do about it? So the state has a lawsuit right now, a number of other states. I am not a lawyer, so I am sort of parroting what I've heard, that the lawsuit that's out there now is, is a placeholder lawsuit until we can mount a stronger lawsuit against the constitutionality of what they've done. Now, from what I'm told, again, not a lawyer, the, the constitutionality of what they've done is suspect because they have made an exemption, this is ideological, because in many states, conservative states, they have allowed for people to do exactly this, donate to a charitable donation to fund private schools that compete with public schools. And they have allowed that in Indiana, Georgia, Arkansas, whatever those things happen. This is the same principle by which the New York State Legislature, the governor, put together a charitable nation structure which we could, you and I could donate a certain amount, and that that would cover a certain amount of service, not 100%, but it would allow you some degree of tax deductibility above the 10,000 limit. It depends on where you are financially in your world, you know, it depends if you're paying property taxes or not, you know, in your life. But, so, so our response is to work with the second lawsuit, and the county may be a party to that second lawsuit. And the hope is that we would get a federal judge who would stop the implementation of this long enough for there to be a longer discussion of the principles behind it and avoid its implementation for this coming year's taxes. We don't know if that'll happen. And now, we're against federal government, but we're watching the Kavanaugh deal. If Kavanaugh gets, gets appointed to the Supreme Court, many of his figure, this case will make its way to the Supreme Court. And Alito, Roberts, and Clarence Thomas, and Kavanaugh, Gorsuch, they ain't going to let this lawsuit pass. They're going to, they'll reject it. But the effort to take it to court is the best strategy we have available to us. The county, the city, the school district have no power to, to reverse this. The reversal can come in two ways, in the courts or by changing who represents us in Washington D.C. We do everything we can to cooperate with the strategy, but we're in uncharted waters. We don't quite know how to administer this because it's tricky. I'm sure the city's going through this right now, and the school district's going through this right now, their discussions. It is not clear exactly how we would do this effectively. We've never done it before. But the, the short answer is that's what we're going to try to do. Now, in terms of county taxes, I've mentioned that the budget is going to be submitted in November to the Board of Legislators. We do not have a plan to raise property taxes above the tax cap level. Now, when I say that, I've said that during the campaign, because I'm a Democrat, I ran against a Republican, the whole campaign was George Lattimer, we'll raise your taxes. And it's repeated like a mantra, and the people who don't know, be just assuming he's a Democrat, he's going to raise taxes. We believe that there are other sources of revenue that are not property tax-related revenue that can help us close the budget gap that I inherited, that will help us avoid a big property tax increase. I'm not going to say there's going to be a zero. We had seven years of zero in a row. Now, if you don't put, if you go seven years and you don't put a die. Now, if you don't put, if you go seven years and you don't put a dime in your car, how does your car run? If you don't put it, if you don't go to your closet, and I'm not much of a clothes horse, as you can tell, but if you go to your closet and you don't buy one stitch of new clothing in seven years, what is your wardrobe look like when you have to go out? So to go seven years and never raise property taxes, and it appeals to some people for whom everything is about money, it's about money, it's about taxes, money, if they deposit you that much, move to North Dakota, because North Dakota has zero taxes, and also got sub-zero weather in the wintertime. You don't see people flocking to the coast, so it tells you, it isn't always about the money. But in terms of where we're coming from, if we do have a property tax increase, it will be within the tax cap, and it will be modest, it will not be a high single digit. How are we going to balance the budget? I'll give you a couple of examples, but I can't make all the numbers add up until we finish the budget. We have renegotiated the Liberty Lines contract. The Liberty Lines contract, my predecessor wanted to extend the same terms for five years so we would be able to touch it, we kind of pushed back on that. We got a chance to renegotiate, we negotiated with Liberty Lines, we have a four million dollar savings a year from the renegotiation, four million dollar savings. So you put that on the plus side. We got a big deficit from what we inherited, so but we got plus four million in savings, not by cutting jobs, are renegotiating an existing contract. We've created a contract, or we've signed a contract with a company called New Energy that says we can generate revenue by the way we shut down our usage of electricity during demand periods, which makes logical sense. If we have a lot of lights, a lot of buildings, you know, we run sewer treatment plants, amusement park, airport, you name it. If we come back with a game plan to use less electricity in the peak periods of times, we will get paid by the utility for not drawing from the grid. A million a year, put that on the side of what we're doing. We're negotiating with Airbnb right now. Airbnb has sites all over the place, but they've never collected hotel occupancy tax. If you have a legitimate hotel, you have to pay occupancy tax. If you're Airbnb, you don't. So we had a negotiation with them, there's some contracts, haven't signed it yet, they're trying to work out the legal language, and if that thing does go through, then Airbnb will guarantee us revenue that we don't have now, it's probably about a half million, maybe it's less, maybe it's a little more, but we're going through that kind of a check-down process to find other revenues, not property tax revenues, that will help us balance the budget. And every time you heard balance the budget, it was always cut, 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 cut. So now you don't have enough people working in the various departments of county government. You can't, you know, you can't get the service response that you need to get. You don't invest in our maintenance, our parks, or this and that, the other thing. So that's the theory. My challenge, our challenge as a team, is by November tenth, to give a budget to the Board of Legislators that has modest property tax increase in it, if it is a property tax increase, and it shows enough revenue to make the budget balanced. Not easy, but that's the plan. And you hear people say, "Oh, they're going to raise taxes big," that's political rhetoric, that's what they want us to do, because the next round of politics comes into play, and "Oh, we put those Democrats in, now they're going to tax us out of sight, we need to go back to what we had before." We're going to try to show you there's a third way, and the third way is non-property tax revenue.
So, did that spark anything?
I think I heard him sleep, that's the problem.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't know how to work.
Quick, come on. County Executive.
By the way, you call me George, I'm much more comfortable with that. All right. You've called me that all my life.
I'm Sam, Sam North, I'm the second vice president of Peekskill NAACP. I'm also the chair of the Criminal Justice Committee. So the first thing I'm going to do is plug our next event, which I'm personally inviting you to, which is, we're screening, we're doing a special screening of the film Dramatic Escape, which is, follows a group of prisoners in Sing Sing Prison who work with rehabilitation through the arts, and they put on a play every year.
Marion Carr from Bedford always tells me about this.
Yeah, it's a great program, and they made a really excellent film which we're screening, and then we're going to have a panelist, a group of formerly incarcerated individuals who are, who went through that program in a panel discussion afterwards. So that's September twenty-seventh, the Thursday the twenty-seventh, from six-thirty to nine-thirty P.M. at Peekskill Middle School. But I'll give you a flyer, so.
Okay.
The question I have relates specifically to the things that we are interested in on the criminal justice side. The first is cash bail. One of the things the NAACP is very interested in seeing the elimination of is the use of cash bail. And the other question, your thoughts on bringing a drug court to Peekskill? We don't have one, I think there's only one drug court in Westchester County, which is in the Lower Westchester. I think that it's something that we have, you talked about, something that is an alternative to the traditional criminal justice system, especially for people that need help rather than necessarily, you know, punitive measures. So those are my two questions, about cash bail and a drug.
Well, in both of those two issues, the county isn't the main player. The district attorney, say, the county administration's not the main player. The district attorney is part of county government, but he runs that department independently of whatever we do. And just for the record, the county clerk, the Board of Legislators, the Board of Elections, and the district attorney are all independent of whatever our executive branch administrations. All the other branches of executive government fall under us. The last time I spoke with representatives in the DA's office, my understanding was that he was phasing out bail as a situation, that's my understanding. I'm not a hundred percent sure, Sam, you may know better than I do. I would support it. I don't know frankly the system about where, and I haven't been involved in that element of it, but if that's the direction of the district attorney, if that is true, then I would support that, I think that makes logical sense. The purpose of bail, we all understand, is not to punish, not to keep a person off the street, it's to ensure that the person shows up at trial for the trial. And if you have reason to think that they will flee, then you impose either a very high bail or no bail at all. Absent that, the likelihood of a person showing up should not represent his financial, her financial ability to pay something, because it's not proportionate to whatever it is that they may have done. So philosophically, you know, I can support lower bail or change in the structure of bail, because again, the purpose is to have them show up for that. Now, we, the county, house a person in county jail if they're awaiting trial, and either they've been denied bail and they can't make one. And so that does become a cost to the county, but we don't have the power to change the policy. But I do think the DA is either moving in that direction, or has moved in that direction, and as you investigate this further, if you want to communicate back to me, I'm happy to determine if there's a role for the county to play in this. By the way, the DA, Tony Scarpino, was a year ahead of me, he's a classmate at Mount Vernon High School. I graduated class of seventy, not to date myself, and he was class of sixty-nine, and so I've known him like forever. And, you know, if there's a dialogue I need to have with him that you think I should have, just give me a call, let me know that, and we can talk on a level basis. I think drug courts work, I've seen it in a number of other places. I believe I've seen it in Mount Vernon and Yorichelle, if I'm not mistaken. And in both of those two places, what it does is it identifies that the solution to a person who is involved in the drug world, either as a possessed, or even was selling a certain level of drugs, is that you deal with the person as an illness or sickness first. The fact that they've committed a crime in some way, shape, or form is why they're in court, but you don't deal with them the same way you do somebody who did armed robbery, who was purposely trying to steal, or, you know, potentially a physical crime to somebody. So when drug court works, what it does is it differentiates the person who's got a bad addiction, or is in a bad place, and can, and if they get out of that place, they won't go back into the criminal justice system. So to the extent that those things exist, I think they work, to the greater extent. They don't work perfectly, because we're human beings, and we ain't perfect, and we make mistakes. If I was perfect, I wouldn't be overweight. So I get what an addiction is, but I did eat those munchkins, I looked at them right here. But, so I think the expansion of a drug court in Peekskill, I would support that. If it winds up being something that's done through the city court structure, we probably don't pay for it. If it were something done through a higher level of court, then we would be the landlord and we would pay for it. For example, you know, not that I have the money to back this up tomorrow, but you probably should have a family court here in Peekskill. You're going through right now, big mishigas, as my Jewish friends would say, down in Yorichelle, trying to recite a family court. We have one in Yonkers. And, you know, logically, because of the distance between here and someplace else, you probably should have a family court. If they're there, the decision would be made by the court system, OCA, but we would be the landlord, so they'd say, "Yes, we're going to have a family court, go find one, George, and pay for it." So, you know, but the reason to have it would be there, just like the reason for drug court would be there. So we would try to work on that. But I think if there is a drug court, my understanding is that the two that I'm familiar with personally, I assume there's one in Yonkers, I've never been there for that, but the ones that I have seen come through the municipal court structure, and would be something that the OCA would be advocating for. And, you know, I've known Kathy Davidson for a long, long time. I'm sure she'd be in favor of it, but I'm sure she's working through a bureaucracy with money and all that, and it would probably be that issue that would be the impediment, to find enough money to be able to structure it within the Peekskill system.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. I am so glad that you brought those flyers and you made that announcement. Just in the interest of transparency, I spent over twenty years in law enforcement, so juvenile justice, restorative practices, is just something that I'm really, really passionate about. You know, it's something to be on one side, but to see the sense of humanity, once you see people given a chance and an opportunity to recover from their mistakes, and, you know, for people to listen. And so this is a, the NAACP for me was just such a really good fit after I retired, and once I saw the work that they were doing, and I met Sam and saw how passionate he was with all the work that the juvenile ju, uh, the Criminal Justice Committee was doing for the community, and the larger communities that embrace Peekskill. I just wanted to be a part of it as well, so thanks again. Do you want to give the date again?
September twenty-seventh.
September twenty-seventh.
Yes.
At Peekskill Middle.
Six-thirty.
Does anybody else? Yes.
There's no more questions from online?
There's plenty of them, but I wanted to give you guys, you know, this is a collaborative conversation.
Okay. Hey, George.
Hey.
This is you again.
Nice to meet you.
We are on the topic of drugs, so that's why I wanted to come up. Well, I'm Kimmy Poe, I am the secretary of the Austin NAACP, and also the program director for Home and Against Drugs. The goal for Home and Against Drugs is to promote healthy lifestyles among the youth in Westchester County, to give them the self-esteem, the knowledge to stay away from the alcohol, tobacco, and drugs, and the benefits of eating healthy, exercising, and setting goals. Now, I want to thank you for supporting the drug coalitions that we have locally in the towns. Their focus is on teens, and the Home and Against Drugs program is focused on elementary. So currently, the Home and Against Drugs program is in Peekskill, Austin, Ellsford, Greenberg, it's being implemented in Mount Vernon and Yonkers. Right now, the funding that I have is from organizations and from businesses and private sponsors, so I wanted to know, how can the county help me expand this program throughout the whole Westchester County?
What I suggest you do is put together an ask, a dollar ask, you know, we need X number of dollars. Put together, I'm sorry, I dropped my keys there, put together maybe a two-page explanation of how the money will be used, and send it to me at the county office building, and be addressed to me and Ken Jenkins, as Deputy County Executive. If you can get that to us by the first of October, which is a few weeks hence, two weeks hence, we'll see what we can do with this budget that we're dealing with. That's a tight budget, I'm just giving you the explanation of where we're at. Sometimes it's hard to fund something new in the first year, but at least you get an ask in, and then we're able to start to evaluate it. And if we don't have the resources to fund it in this year, then at least it's in the pipeline for the following year. And, you know, explain, you know, how the money would be used, and when, what the benefit, the output of the benefit would be, which you can easily do. And we don't need warrant piece, this is not a ten-page application, this is just explain it in narrative form, X number of dollars, what number you go for, and then do that. And if you want to catch me before I go, I'll give you the address, the mailing address. We would like the proposal in old-fashioned hand-copied stuff, rather than email. Email's easy, but in this case, we want something that we can copy and give to other decision-makers to discuss, and we'll give it a fair look for the budget process for 2019, and, you know, we can go from there.
Thank you.
And by the way, that advice goes to anybody in any of the nonprofits in the community, and just philosophically, some people view a government-funding nonprofits as like giveaway, memorizing, you know, spending money that isn't the core reason for government to exist. I have a counterargument to that. The counterargument is, the people who support that, the people who oppose funding nonprofits often say, "We need to contract with business to do certain functions, because privatization of a function is a more professional way to deliver that function." My argument is that nonprofits, depending on which one it is, provide a professional way to provide a function, in the same way that a corporation provides a professional way to have a function. We don't have the resources to create a county government way to address that function. So we contract with this organization for these services, which is a nonprofit, and we contract with a corporation to do these kind of services, which is not part of government, because they're established, they're already established, they already have personnel who are trained to do that function, whatever that function is. And if you look at it that way, when people say, "Well, privatization is a good thing." Well, privatization with corporations is the same function as privatization with nonprofits, it depends on what the function is, and it depends on how much money you're spending. So to that extent, I welcome nonprofits looking for support from the county. It has to be tied to what you're doing, and what the result is. It's not just, you know, largess, but I think a case can be made, you know, and if you can make that case, and we can have the resources, we can do it. And it's different, as I said, from the rhetoric that you normally hear, which is, you know, "Well, we've got to get government out of the business of this and give it to a private company." Well, I worked in corporate companies for twenty years, worked with some fairly big subsidiaries, subsidiary investing, subsidiary of I T T, and all that. Corporations don't do stuff unless they can make a profit off of it. So before you privatize, you say yourself, if they'll take it on and make money off of it, why are we doing it unless there's a reason to do it? In some cases, there's a reason to do it, they have technical people and expertise that we don't have, but in some cases, it's just as much a giveaway to a corporation as you say a giveaway to a nonprofit. You're letting this other company take a profit, when you yourself could manage it and have the resources that benefit back into the society. So with that philosophy, put something together for us by October first, and we'll take a heartwarming.
I have a question from our service providers and their families, who provide services to the county jails. Given the overpopulation in the county jail, how will you make it safer for the guards as well as the inmates?
Well, I don't know that we're overpopulated in the county jail, that's not my understanding of it. My understanding is that we're down population in the jail right now. I don't necessarily know what is allocated in the women's unit versus the men's unit, but my general understanding is that we are not, we're far from overpopulated. In fact, we resisted filling the empty cells by contracting with the federal government for, you know, immigrant community. The second part of that question is legitimate, how do we make it safe for correction officers to work with them? And the short answer is technology. And the connection to the short answer is money, because my understanding, and I'm no corrections expert, is that there are now ways to use technology that will allow the workforce of X to better manage the inmate population safely and securely. And I think, you know, our county jail seems to be relatively modern, but there are things that could be improved in the way we do it, and I think that becomes what we have to look at. What investments do we need in technology that would allow us the monitoring that we need to have without having to have an individual correction officer in a compromised situation? I would also, and I think that we're in the process of doing some of these things, some of them were being done before I got on board, so I give credit to the past, but some of them have been innovated more recently, is the more we have programs that, because remember we're a county jail, we're not there for long-term incarceration. It's a year, and then you're out, you get your sentences, you're less, or you're there, as I said before, because you're waiting, you're waiting either sentencing, or you're waiting, you don't have bail, and you're waiting to coordinate. When you have short-term folks like that, we have programs whereby you can get your GED, we just graduated nineteen people with a GED earlier this year, and we now have a college class with Manhattan, it's only four folk in it, but they can get actual college credits, which would lead them then, when they come out, to be able to go on to college and hopefully, you know, redirect the life in a positive way. So I think it's also the programs that we do that help protect our correction officers, because for that portion of the inmate population that has the chance for a better life, they now have a reason to quote, play by the rules, leave the institution and move on in a positive way to something, and I think education is usually, as I said earlier, is the hook. And if you can, if you can get some of that behind bars that leads you to the outside world, then the chances of you coming back in are a lot less, and your willingness not to do things while you're inside then would compromise the safety of the correction officers more.
Thank you. Does anybody else have a question? Does anybody else have a question?
Hello, good morning. My name is Natalie. I am the chair for the Women's Committee for the NAACP. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
So, welcome, thank you for being here. I have a couple of questions, I don't know if you want to keep coming back.
Whatever, whatever's yours is what I do.
I'll keep it brief. All right, the first thing I want to focus on is young people. You said that for seven years, Westchester didn't really raise property taxes. Property taxes in Westchester are really high. It's really hard for me to buy a home here, it's hard for my friends to buy a home here, it's hard for me to stay here. It was easier maybe decades ago, or a couple, one decade or two ago, when my parents were buying homes here. What are you doing, or what is Westchester doing to do that? Because I don't see the difference between Nassau County and Westchester County. Property taxes in Nassau shouldn't be eighteen to thirty thousand dollars for a seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house, where it sticks to maybe ten or twelve thousand in Nassau County. Now, not raising it is great, but how do we stay here? How do we belong here? I mean, you want to...
Let me ask, let me ask. I got the point, which is high property taxes are making it difficult for people to buy homes. Couple of things to mention. First of all, I'll give you a general number. You multiply it if you pay more property taxes, divide it if you pay less. If you pay twenty thousand dollars in property taxes, out of that twenty thousand dollars, you're paying four thousand dollars to Westchester County. The government that I'm tasked with running is four thousand dollar tax bill out of your twenty. If you live in Peak Skill, these are round numbers, you're probably paying to the city of Peak Skill three thousand dollars. So when you hear the city and the county, that's seven out of your twenty. Thirteen out of your twenty goes to your school district. And you heard me say a few minutes ago, I think it's a mistake to fund schools out of property taxes. Why do I say that philosophically, just so you know why? Because what the city provides and what the county provides are real estate-related services. What does the city do? Police, fire, sanitation, snow removal. What does the county provide? Bus systems, sewerage, things that are related to the fact that you own a piece of land. What does the school district have? The school district provides its societal service, which is education, just like healthcare is a societal service. If you're providing a societal service, it should be paid for philosophically by the income of the society, not just the geography where you live. So you're paying high property taxes here. Now, the difference between here and Nassau, I assume you moved to Nassau most recently?
No.
There are certain things in Nassau that are structured differently than you might experience here. But I can tell you, if you move around Westchester County, you'll have different tax rates, because you have different school districts and different needs and so forth. The fundamental situation for high property taxes is not your county tax money that you spend, it's the level of services that we're providing at the school district level, and certain kinds of services that you have here that you don't have in other parts of the country. The best example I can give you of that, not the only example, is mass transit. I was picking on South Carolina before, I'm picking on Texas. I worked for a company that was headquartered in Texas, right outside of Houston. I'd go down there a week a month for a company, yes. Houston has no suburban rail and no subway in the city of Houston. The people who travel from the outside of Houston to inside Houston, around Houston, they do it in a car. Maybe a Volkswagen. But you basically have no commuter rail or subway. We pay in our property taxes and our sales taxes, a piece of the course of Metro North. Now, when you live up in Peak Skill, Metro North doesn't serve the same population percentage. Because if you live this far out of the city, there's a small percentage of people that go to the city every day. You go down county, and a higher percentage of people commute in, they want houses closer to the city. But the level of service that you have is one of the big reasons why you have the high property taxes you have, and in the school districts. If you want to look at what happens if you have a kid with special needs, what kind of services are provided for that kid in New York versus Texas? It's unbelievably different. And you probably have heard on the national news that a lot of these, I hate to say it, the southern and Rocky Mountain states, they're having protests from their teachers, because their teachers are so underpaid. Now, people say, "Well, our teachers get a lot of money." Well, I'll tell you what, I have one daughter, she went through the public school system. You know, her future was more important to me than just about anything else, even more important than this career I have. So that I knew that she was taught by teachers who were properly compensated and motivated to teach her, so she could, as she did, go to college, get a graduate degree, since a social work degree in NSW, married, two kids, gainfully employed, I'm good there. And that was a factor. Now, my observation, the real problem that young people face in getting housing is not property taxes, it's the cost of the house in the first place. Now, when I look at what I pay in a mortgage payment, I pay, I don't mind saying it, I pay about thirty-five hundred bucks a month in a mortgage payment. I've got a couple of years' more than my mortgage is due. And I have a very modest house, you drive by it, public address, forty-seven Wayne Wright Street, look there. That's where you live, you know, you think, "Ah, shit, nope." But when you look at a house like mine, and you pass by it in any part of the country, you look at that house and say, "That's a three-hundred-thousand-dollar house, maybe two-hundred-thousand-dollar house, two-fifty..." In Westchester County, it's probably eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. Now, why? Because the demand to live here is so great. And what happens is, there's a house you drive by, let's say, you know, you know, I'll take it out of your case or mine, but you know, a guy goes by, he has a job, his wife's working, they don't have any kids yet, and they look at a house, it's three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Well, okay, we've saved about a hundred thousand, or we can get it from mom and dad. And then you find that the house is eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Well, a Wall Street banker comes in, and he says, "How much is that?" He pulls out his bankbook, and he's got an offer on the table. Can't compete. And you've got to go to a bank, this is the real world. You've got to go to a bank, a mortgage, you're qualified, you can't compete. We haven't even gotten to the tax part yet, it's just the inflation of it. And I hear people all the time, not necessarily you, saying to me, "It's so expensive to live here, how can we compete?" Because everybody's praising the invisible hand of the marketplace, Adam Smith, supply and demand. It's supply and demand, invisible hand of the marketplace, that makes Westchester expensive, more than any other single factor, and that's just the truth. Now, you can't, sometimes in politics, you can't say the truth, because it doesn't connect with what people think it is. They think it's all about their taxes. That's what people say who already live here now, because we do have high taxes. But it's not the high taxes, it's the actual cost of the property that's the barrier. And there, it's very difficult for us to artificially do it, except for one thing that we try to do, and that's affordable housing. When we develop affordable housing, we give an entry-level place for people to get into. And we're not doing enough of it in this county. We just went through eight years where a man was fighting with the federal government, overdoing affordable housing, he did just what he had to do, seven-hundred-and-fifty units. We believe the need is a lot greater than that. If you can land in an affordable housing unit in Westchester, then the burden is on you, me, and everybody else, to figure out how to grow our income, to be able to move from an affordable unit to an ownership scenario. Sometimes there's a co-op, you know, step before you go there. But I understand the frustration and the pressure. But I have to tell you, if you go to some of these communities down county, people say, "Everybody's moving out of Westchester." Let me tell you what I see. I see houses, perfectly nice houses, being torn down. Bigger houses put in their place, and people buy them right away. What it is, is the people with resources who've come into the city, they come out to the suburb, they see Bronco, bang, they buy it. Watch, bang, they buy it. Mount Vernon, not so much. Portchester, not so much. But the people say, "Do I want to live here, do I want to live there?" So the school district, you start looking at the safety factor, those things come into play. It's a complicated mixture of things. If we were to freeze property taxes... Well, let me give you a different example. Let's say we cut property taxes ten percent. I'm not picking on you, but you asked a question, I want a really answer.
No, no, I got...
I want to give you some political...
I wanted to know how I could be better about it. You're going to be a lot of information. Bottom line is, I need resources. I need housing, and I need answers. I got the information, and I...
The answer for you, and what you have to do in housing assistance, comes from those kind of organizations that are housing advocacy organizations. They can sit with you, they can say, "Here are the kind of things that you may be able to apply for to get some additional money, low-interest loan, to let you get in as a first-time buyer." Westchester Restaurant Potential Opportunities is one of those organizations, and they can give you that advice. That should end the answer to your question, but I still want to go one more step.
Thank you, Natalie. Thank you for telling us later. And you know what, one of the things I did, I did try to do my research, I wanted to represent well. The Westchester County has a really robust website with a lot of information. If you go to westchastergov.com and go to housing, they have a portion there you can ask, and it pretty much answers a lot of the questions. And then, our wonderful legislator has left his phone number, which I will say towards the end, I'll repeat. And so we can make sure that we get those questions answered. Natalie, like she said, she's our chair of the Women's Committee of the NAACP, but she also is all over the city and everything else, and so she has a lot of energy, so we really appreciate that. We're going to move on. We do have a question, but thank you, because it actually did answer a lot of questions that we still have sitting here.
This is why I don't get invited to a party. Somebody will say, "So what's going on in the county?" a half an hour later.
Okay, so let's just go to some special needs, special needs question. This is a really dope question.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Jennifer. I hate to interrupt the group. Running out of time, I saw a lot of hands in the audience.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Give the people a chance to ask a question that are here. For both of you, which question, please?
Absolutely, come on up. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Lordimer. My name is Carly Rae Johnson, I live in Peak Skill. I don't know if this is even an appropriate question, but there may be somebody here, or maybe I should ask this question elsewhere, but... There's a lot of polarization and politicization of issues when they come up in the community. Social media exacerbates this, and local municipalities can reflect the horrible national climate. So I'm wondering if you know of any programs, or are there any models in existence in the county or elsewhere that you know of that help local municipalities to ease, prevent, make more healthy community dialogues on contentious issues?
That's probably a sixty-four-thousand-dollar question in government today, because we've watched the nature of our dialogue just get worse and fast over the last number of years. And it didn't start with Donald Trump, but he has certainly accelerated it, and I don't think that's any kind of exaggeration. I've been in public office a while, and at different levels of government, and we have lost the willingness to listen to each other. And the people are defriending each other on Facebook, and, you know, simple conversations turn into screaming matches because of ideology. I don't know of any, the short answer to your question, I don't have any programs that exist. I suppose out there, there are certain types of think tanks, I'm trying to think of any of them that I'm familiar with, that may have programs for civil discourse, but it almost has to be invited in by a government or legislative body that is having these kind of problems. Because what you have in people who are elected to public office is people who get elected, and they have fairly strong, you know, will. I mean, I've been on the ballot a lot, takes a lot to go through. I see my friend Nancy Van just walked in, she was on the ballot, and you take a pounding when you run for office. And sometimes it just doesn't help that, you know, you just can't resist, you know, the back action when somebody comes after you, it's just human nature. I would say this, though, from my standpoint. I also, I don't have a program for it, I don't have a place to think of. If I do find one, if you want to communicate with me, if I stumble across one, I'll share it. But I can tell you what we've tried to do for the eight months that we've been in office down White Plains. First of all, we've worked very well across the aisle between Republicans and Democrats. We have not been in agreement on some of these issues. We have dialogue before adopting certain things. So, you know, we didn't get the support across the aisle of the gun show ban, but we had dialogue about it, and hell, full respect for dialogue. We did get support for the Immigrant Protection Act on the other side of the aisle, which we didn't have fully in Europe. Made a couple modifications to it that the advocacy community ultimately accepted. When folks on the other side of the aisle had an idea, one of the Republican legislators had an idea to deal with disabled veteran businesses and their needs, we were able to justify passing the policy that they advocated. So we didn't play what they do in Albany, which is if you're the minority, you get nothing. And I've been on both sides of that in the Assembly of the majority, the Senate of the minority. If you're a minority senator, you get nothing. Why? Because we want your seat. We want to defeat you, we don't want you to go home and say you accomplished anything. We want your seat to maintain power. And both parties do it. And it's wrong, but... So we're not replicating that down White Plains. I appointed a Republican, Jim Asano, to head the Consumer Protection Department. Jim is a talented guy, he's doing a great job with it. I didn't tell him he had to change his party, he's still a Republican, but he was the right man for the job, and I brought him in. Jim did not support me when I ran either for county executive or senate. Ron Tochi, who's the head of Veterans Services, did not support me when I ran for county executive or senate. I kept him in his position because I knew that he was good in that job. So it's the mindset and the attitude. And we're doing these coffees and conversations, I haven't done one in Peak Skill yet, where I go with the local county legislator. We do like basically the same thing as you're doing here today, we sit side by side, and we have coffee in a notch, and we discuss issues. I've done them in Austin, and Chappaqua, Mount Kisco up here, and we've done some down county, other communities. And I've done them with Republican legislators. That was unheard of when I was in the county legislature, to have sat with somebody of the other party, you know, and you would hear this, they'd say, "You're making him look good, why are you helping him, you want to defeat him?" And then on the other side, they say, "What are you sitting with him for? Makes him look good, like he's going to get crossover support when he runs the next time." Because it's bad government. You know, it's bad government not to do it, it's good government to do that. So that's what we're trying to do. It doesn't mean we agree on everything. It doesn't mean we even agree as a Democrat in the Democratic Party. We fight with each other all the time. But at the end of the day, we disagree. But if we have more in common, then we come together. And the key is, when you disagree, do not vilify the other person. Now, there's disagreement, and there's disagreement. You may have two candidates running in a party who have different strategies toward the same end. You support this candidate, perfectly valid. I support the other candidate, that's my choice too. At the end, we're nearby. The people with the other philosophy are not the enemy. They're fellow Americans, they just don't agree with what you want. Now, separate from that, you've got white supremacists, you've got Nazis. And then you don't say about those people, "Oh, there's good on both sides." No. Nazis are there. When you read Mein Kampf, and you have a picture of Hitler on your wall, that's not just a disagreement in things. And so you have to know when to defriend somebody, you know? You defriend them when they're supporting Hitler, not when they have a different strategy for sewer repair. And so I'm hoping that if we can function in county government in that kind of a fashion, we can compete, we can disagree, but the old line about still going out and having a beer will apply. What happens in Washington, I can't tell you. One final point. There are certain issues that come up. You have it here with the homeless shelter that's being debated about on Washington, and what have you. Sometimes passions are just too intense, and my attitude when those things happen, I have with the Nursheil family, toward the south end of Nursheil, the exact opposite of the county. You've just got to let the passions burn. It's like a firefighter, you're a firefighter, you look at a house, the house is so engaged, you can't put the fire stove and burn it down. Why? Because some people feel so intensely about certain things, if you try to suppress it, you're going to make them mad. So you do the opposite. You open the door up, you vent the fire, and you say, "Okay, fine, come and say whatever you want." And I sit there, and I listen to people coming to the microphone. I know people come, public sessions, got a microphone, criticize me because of my left eye impediment, make a wise crack because of my weight. You just sit there and say, "Okay, all right, what's your point? You made your point, you give me snark, tell me now where your substance is." And at the end of the day, once they give me that snark, then they got nothing else. And it defangs them. You know, if you get up every morning, and you get on that Twitter, and you start agitating and agitating, that's what's going to make the society go crazy.
How many have questions? Okay, so we have... Okay, so you guys, they look wide, now all of a sudden, you know, you're running out of time. So quickly.
Maybe the people that want to talk can sit up here, so they can go next?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think that would be...
It's a community effort.
Good morning, Cassandra Rae, resident of Peak Skill, member of the NAACP, as well as the Newsnight Data Chapter. There's been discussion around taxes possibly being raised. I understand the budget is not complete, but is there a possible percentage of increase that the county residents should be expecting?
Well, what I've said is that we're not going to raise it above the tax cap. We're going to stay, if we raise it, because it's not a sure thing yet, if we raise it, we will stay within the tax cap. Now, the general tax cap is two percent. They have a formula that allows for different things, and all that. But we have no plan to have to raise the taxes above that. Property, you make reference to property taxes now. We have no plan to raise it above the tax cap. And by the way, most governments, including the most conservative governments in this county, and the most conservative towns have done the same thing. They haven't stayed zero, 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 they've gone within the tax cap. That is our intent. As we put the numbers together, if we can catch a few more breaks, you know, like I've just said. Now, you know, if the state legislature, and I served there, so I'm not picking on them, if they were to allow for us to have internet sales tax, which is now legal based on the Supreme Court, that would raise our sales tax revenue. If we raise our sales tax revenue, then we don't have to raise the property taxes. But they won't do that before the end of the year, we can't project it. Those are the factors we're looking at to determine what our revenue will be and how we'll predict it as we go forward.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Valerie, and I'm a resident of Peekskill and PR Communications Chair and Economic Development Co-Chair and Entergy First Life President. So I have two questions, um, kind of unrelated, but first is, what are you doing to get more funds for MWBE businesses within Westchester County? And the second has to do with budget and kind of letting us understand, how do we find out about houses that have no ownership or abandoned in our neighborhoods and there's nobody that owns it?
Uh, the second, the second question on abandoned houses, zombie houses, um, I don't think we have a registry that would have that information now across the board. I don't want to throw it out the city, but I think probably the first call to make is to the city because the city has the local tax role. And they would have an idea of foreclosures first and whether or not a house is, uh, you know, currently, uh, active or, or way, way behind in taxes and there's a short sale or something like that. So I think, unless Drew gives me a bad look over here from across the room, I think Valerie, to find that information, that I would start at City Hall on the second issue. Um, the first issue, you just said it to me, just, just, just tell me the topic again.
Uh, funding for MWBE.
Okay, so we've just launched a more aggressive MWBE program. Uh, we've created an MWBE task force to look into this. And I want to be quite honest with you. When I sat at this table with Ken Jenkins last year and talked about this issue, I said during the primary, he had the best plan I had ever seen for MWBE. And somebody said, what's your plan? I said, it's his plan. So I did win, so it is his plan. And I don't care if I'm a copycat, I'll copycat. Uh, and, and the, the plan and the program is extensive in a way that I asked you to do two things. Go on the, uh, Westchester Gov website or Google Westchester MWBE because there's been recent press on this. Pull that out. Once you read it, it will generate more questions. Once you get to that point, then call us. And then you can report back to the branch as to how we vote about these programs. Because it is complicated in certain ways. Here's, here's the biggest fear I have with MWBE as we expand it. I don't want to reward people who are beating the system. How do you beat the system? You put a woman up there as head of a company, but really the leadership of the company is just as male as it's ever been. Or similarly with a person of color. You know, and, and so we're trying to figure out, how do we, how do we make sure the benefits get to those businesses that really are viable? And, and so, so do those things, then call us, 995-2900 if you have the questions and then obviously if you want to report back to the branch at the next meeting, I guess, you'll be in a position to do that. George, I thank you.
Good, George, thanks for coming to Peekskill again. Uh, when you were at the chamber last time, uh, and you've already addressed Entergy's departure in Indian Point at length, but there was some talk about Bridget Givens walk, working on some type of an economic empowerment zone. Is there anything going on in that?
Yes, we've approached, um, the state and the state designated the region, I don't know what the mileage region was around Indian Point, as one of the federal economic empowerment zones. They, the, the feds sent to the states, identify them in the state and that was one of the ones that was identified. Now, the question is what kind of, is going to come, you know? And, um, I think later this week, uh, no, next week, no, this week, there's a meeting, I think on Thursday night in Cortland Town Hall. I'm going to try to come up for it, in which, um, the local Indian Point Task Force will be discussing that. Bridget will be there. Pete Lauren, who works for our team based here in Peekskill, works out of the DSS office, but he's involved with Indian Point. Uh, we will try to look and determine where are we at in the progress of applying for money that would be used for the economic development situation. We've tried to identify, you know, like in real world terms, not just general promotion of the area, but what, what do we have to do that might be infrastructure? You know, do we have to extend a sewer pipe to make this piece of land developable for a certain purpose? Or do we use IDA power, which we have, and the city has IDA, but the county has IDA as well, so it applies outside of the city's IDA structure. And then the IDAs, we can give, uh, we can, um, uh, give reductions in sales tax and other kinds of taxes, not property taxes, I'm sorry. Not property taxes, but other kinds of taxes as incentive for a business to do development. So we have to figure out how to package those benefits in a way that would make a, 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 a business or developer saying, yes, this is where I want to come. And these are how many jobs I'm going to bring on a permanent basis to do that. Uh, we're also dealing with the fact, in fairness, that we're looking at the phase out of Indian Point being the phase in of what we're doing. And, and it's really targeted toward, okay, on this date, we will lose pilot money. And so by this date, we have to ramp up our things. So I don't know that by next spring, you will see something concrete, but in theory, it should coordinate with, with the reduction of what Indian Point is doing economically. Because when they, they're going to start to renegotiate pilots once with the 20, once, when the first, uh, thing goes down in 2020, they're not going to want to make the same payments again.
My, my only comment on that is that Entergy's already ratcheting back. My only comment is that Entergy's already ratcheting back on what they're dispersing in our area for nonprofits. They've always been very generous with nonprofits. So that wouldn't really dovetail with the schedule for them.
I agree, you're right about that. Um, you know, we were thinking in terms of the tax dollar to the government scenario. Uh, obviously not to corporate largess. That's a problem, I don't know how to answer that. Because the county never envisioned that even the government would offset their private philanthropy. We viewed, we had to figure out how to offset their pilot contribution, payment in lieu of tax. Their, their direct subsidy to Hen Hood Schools, to Buchanan Village, to Portland.
And to a lot of nonprofits.
Right, yeah, and that is a problem because they have the great chemistry of nonprofits. I don't know the answer to that question, we should talk about it soon.
Last question.
There's one more after.
Hi, my name is Terry Cardos. I live in Cortland and, uh, I'm an environmental educator and field biologist. It sounds like my question names are following what this gentleman was asking. Like many in the area, I am concerned about the future of the Indian Point property. Um, I had thought that an excellent use for it would be to turn, uh, whatever part is appropriate into a, um, solar energy array and, uh, and/or if possible into wind turbines, if that wouldn't interfere with burn migrations. Now, at a meeting, um, a task force meeting that I was at, Mayor Nickerbacher of, uh, Buchanan kind of made it clear that she was against that idea because she felt that it wouldn't bring, uh, enough money into the town of Buchanan. And I'm not sure how she's really planning to attract light industry or retail or whatever she has in mind, considering that the spent fuel rods are still going to be on site for the foreseeable future. And the high pressure gas line is apparently still going to be 105 feet away, which, you know, is a recipe.
We saw the impact in Portland.
For, for disaster and I, I, I still feel that, um, solar energy would be a great solution to a lot of problems. But, um, despite that, I, I wonder if you could clarify what the county's role, uh, in planning for all this is? I'm not quite clear on that.
Well, the, uh, Entergy has been very clear with us that they own the land. And every theoretical idea that we may have or you may have is all nice, but they're, they're the owner of the property and they're going to decide how to, how to, uh, deal with the property going forward. I mentioned earlier that, uh, what they told us the last meeting I had with, you know, I'm the CEO, but with the level of operating Entergy people they had, they were planning to sell the asset to, uh, a, a company that specializes in decommissioning plants. So there'd be some other decision maker that we'd be dealing with at the time that, that the plant would be, be in the process of decommission. And that's the time when these alternate strategies would come into place. But unless they were going to sell it to us as a government, then we would all be very nervous about buying the site. Because the obligation of keeping that site in proper order is very concerning to us. We could wind up having an, an environmental nightmare on our hands, which all the taxpayers would be paying for. So it's sort of how we negotiate with this decommissioning company once they're on board. And they're not going to be on board until Entergy makes that decision of how they're going to play the game. So I think we're a couple of years away from knowing who we're actually dealing with across the table. Maybe two years, maybe less, but at least that much, a year and a half, let's say. And then with that entity that we'll be dealing with, what is their mindset? Do, will they carve off some of the land to do something of public purpose? You know, because if, look, if, if they sell, uh, for $1, part of their land to us and we're sure that it's clean, then we can have a public purpose for that land, then we can have the discussion about how best to use it. Do we use it for solar fields, do we use it for parks, do we use it for what? And then of course physically on the site, where is it going to be? A few rods are on over here, so maybe we don't want that part for park, we want this part. And, and they'll have to decide are they willing to, to do that. Since they've not been taxed directly, it's not the benefit that it would otherwise be. It was a corporation, they were being fully taxed. Then they'd say, yeah, let me buy these five acres, give it to you. And that's five acres I don't have to pay taxes on. They've operated on a negotiated payment in lieu of taxes. And their basic attitude is, our asset is diminishing. As we stop selling electricity, we stop having revenue coming in. So we're going to just pay you a hell of a lot less in payment in lieu of taxes. And all of that negotiation is coming up. When those things happen, I suspect the state of New York is going to be the main player in the game. That's what I suspect. But they're going to be the one to step in and say, here's the vision we have. Because they were the main player in the deal that got cut. It wasn't the county, the city, the Hen Hood, the town, the village. It was the state of New York, the governor made the decision to do that. And, uh, so, so I, I wish I could give you a specificity that you could rely on. I think we're at least a year and a half away from knowing who we're dealing with, whether, who Entergy may sell this to and who those players have on the minds of us. Good afternoon then.
Yeah, no, I had to apologize because I can't really.
But this day is almost Buenos Aires.
Buenos Aires, yeah. Oh, that, that was good to remind that today we just started the Hispanic Heritage Month, uh, September 15th. And let me invite you for next Sunday, maybe you can come to the city of Peekskill to enjoy the first Hispanic Heritage Festival.
If you can, uh, if you can send me something, that would be appreciated. Lattimergeorge@gmail.com, part for punctuation.
I will. The first thing I want to say, thank you to the NAACP for organizing this kind of town hall. I, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't know if another secretary of the county did it before like this one. And thank you for coming many times to Peekskill and to the city. And I have to thank you all, my colleagues, the mayor and the staff. They helped me to send a letter to you and I haven't met you with the B-line, uh, boss, uh, the, the planning board and everything. Uh, when we request about, uh, the increase, the bus stop shelters, because we don't have like that kind of service and there's a lot of people to, uh, Singapore.
Do you have any shelters in places where you're just, there's specific places you need shelters? You don't have that?
We have like maybe five in the entire city. We have many, I think we have like a six or five lines. Even the, we have a two in, in municipal line that only run in Peekskill. But my, my point is, uh, when, when we have the meeting, we have the suggestion and it's, we are talking about that, that maybe they can come here to Peekskill to do some kind of town hall. Because Peekskill is changing a lot. So, and there's a lot of people, like at the bus, they, they don't go around there. And the people doesn't have a sort of like a housing. We can talk about, uh, Dunbar Heights, uh, the school, high school, middle school, the school district, uh, for, one of the regulations don't provide buses for the student for that age group and some students have to go very, very long distance.
Right.
And that was a possibility to have that kind, uh, the, the town hall to involve even business owners like, uh, Chuck mentioned, or someplace like now. There are a lot of employees who have to go there. If you go to John Wells Boulevard and there are not like, yeah. So we have here the 18 bus and the 31 who run inside the, the, the city limits. And we can maybe talk about, uh, uh, doing some kind of study and, and, and provide better services. They say that the last study they did here in Peekskill was, uh, 18 years ago.
That's clearly a date. So do you have a meeting set up to discuss these things or no, you're trying to get?
No, yeah, we did it. I learned a lot of things, how is sometime like, uh, they cannot provide the bus shelter because they do some distance from the sidewall, the, if they are moping the houses or the property right there.
Here's what I would suggest you do. Send us a note indicating that you'd like to have a meeting in Peekskill, here probably, with relevant individuals from the county government to, to look at Peekskill's bus service in general, keep it general. And if we structure it during the day, I know that may be inconvenient for some, but we're in a position, we can go out and actually look at specific circumstances where, where they are in the community. And then you can say, this corner here, this intersection here, we could actually not just have a conversation about it, but look at the scene. And then determine out of that, if there's an action plan to do one thing or another. I, I, I wouldn't want to guess sitting in White Plains looking at a map as to what makes sense. I'd rather go out and eyeball the corner and have somebody who knows the flow of traffic and pedestrian and all that stuff coming as to what would be things. Now, I can't promise that we'll do the specific thing that, because you'd have to know what it is. And, but, but you'd have a chance to express why the specific thing you're proposing was a good idea. With the relevant people around, take, and I'd be willing to set that, set that up. That's not hard to do.
Yeah, and the, and the meeting they mentioned that they could be doing something like that maybe next spring, so I just want to get, but I want to say.
I would put a timeframe on it from my standpoint. I mean, if, if you contact us, see, this is the cool part about being county executive, okay? I've been a county legislator, I've been in the Assembly, been a senator. I have to ask other people to do stuff. I can like make people do stuff. I could make them solve the opioid problem, right? It's too complicated, but I could make them have a meeting about Peekskill's bus service. So if you can, if you can lay it out and know that there'll be representatives around the table from the community side, and I would make sure you include the city government. Because I don't want to do anything that the city of Peekskill government doesn't know about like, want to, but we have a good neighborhood policy. So, but, you know, I mean, I, I want them totally involved. But if you can do that, and I'm sure you will, then we'll have a discussion and we'll look through these things and we'll see what can be done.
Yeah, that's what I want to say, thank you. Because that meeting that we have, it was good presented to you for, and Mr. Jenkins too. So, and, and, and I think I just want to inform you and, and say thank you because I think it is going to be very good for the citizens.
Also, the great part about being part of the Peekskill NAACP is having access to their school board. So with regards to the buses and the kids, you can always ask, um, Sam Nora about, um, you know, the discussions that the school leadership might have and, and what suggestions that they, planning that they might be doing there. So thank you all, and I'll turn it over to our chairperson, Madeline.
First, I'd like us to thank our Westchester County Executive, George Latimer. And I just want to share a couple of things, I'm going to let you go. The NAACP, this is not the NAACP. The NAACP is the oldest and largest nonpartisan civil rights organization. And we have over 2,200 chapters across the United States. I hear things people don't know, what is the NAACP and what do they do? Events such as today's town hall are presented by NAACP civic engagement committees around the country, whose mission is being frontline advocates committed to raising awareness of political, educational, social, and economic equality for minority groups' citizens in the electoral process. Our committees and chairpersons, I'm going to call out the committee. And please stand if you're here. We have an educational committee headed by Michelle Wiggs. We have environmental and climate justice headed by Vanessa Agudelo. We have economic development headed by our president, Martin McDonald.
Co-Chair.
Co-Chair? Who's your co-Chair? Valerie even in the back. We have health committee, Eddie Fried, he's here. And criminal, criminal justice, you've heard from Sam North. Women in NAACP is Natalie and she's new to our committee. She came in and started our own committee. Those are the things you can do if you have a, a, a passion for the community and its people. That's what we're about and that's why we do what we do. Our last committee is civic engagements and that's what I'm doing. I'm really co-Chair. And we thank you, thank you for coming, Ramon's membership. And I don't know who else, and if I missed anyone, just stand. We had our co-chairs and our, um, PR person, Valerie in the back.
Michael, for you. For you, but he's not here.
I didn't.